Tonight, we enter into a sacred space where listening becomes an act of love, and understanding becomes a pathway to peace. While we may hold different beliefs, practices, or perspectives, our collective goal is clear: to stand together against injustice, to advocate for the vulnerable, and to seek the coming good. As we engage in dialogue, let us remember that disagreement does not diminish our shared humanity, nor does it weaken our collective voice for what is right. In fact, when we listen intently and with humility, we enrich the conversation and strengthen our efforts towards lasting change. It is my hope, however we each understand that word, is that we leave here more united, more hopeful, and more committed than ever to building a world where justice, dignity, and love prevail. Thank you all who've come to that too. Thank you all for being here tonight. Let us open our hearts, listen deeply, and move forward together with courage and compassion. So we have quite a few speakers who are going to come and address various different issues that we are currently facing here in our community, in our state, and in our nation. And it is my ask that when we leave here, that we leave here united, we leave here encouraged, leave here strengthened, and continue to fight. And we have invited some guests to be here with us, and as we can see, they're not here. But anyway, we do have their phone numbers that you will love, each of you wants to give them a call to let them know not only did we miss them, but we had a lot to share with them. So in that, at any given moment, feel free to take a picture of these names and numbers and give them a call. What keeps you up at night? So if Senators Grassley and Ernst and Representative Miller Meeks, if they were seated here with us today, that is exactly what I would ask them: What keeps you up at night? Now, we all know the pressures of being in Congress must be great, so I'm guessing that our representatives, just like all the rest of us, might have mics when the weight of the world, or the weight of day-to-day worries, did the best of them. Maybe it's fundraising that keeps them up at night. Maybe it's deciding how to vote on a bill. That's hope, that's hope there, they're struggling with that. Maybe, maybe it's a little anguish over doing what they don't want to do, even when they know what the right thing to do is, right? All might have something to say about that. Who knows, who knows? Well, here's what I do know, and what I want them to know. What I want them to know is what keeps their constituents up late at night. Their constituents, who just so happen to be our congregants and our neighbors, and the people who seek us out for aid and assistance. What keeps everyday people up late at night are questions like these: How are we going to afford that next medical bill? How am I going to afford that car repair just to get to work? Am I going to have to go to the food pantry again this week, even though I work at a Fortune 500 factory? And that happens here in Iowa City. Can't just get a break, just once, just once? These are the thoughts that keep most regular folk up at night, along with all the other, all the other fears that this current experiment in authoritarianism has unleashed. And to be sure, these aren't the folks who are going to benefit from yet another tax cut for the wealthy few. These aren't the folks who can buy a Bitcoin and then be given special access to the powerful few. These aren't the folks who have the luxury of deciding if they should invest a little more in the stock market or buy that new luxury car. These are the folks, these are the folks, I want Chuck and Joni and Mary and that to understand that these are the folks who are your neighbors, our neighbors. These are the folks who need someone to stand up for them in Washington, not for the wealthy few who can afford to donate unlimited amounts of cash to help them and their friends with the next election, and then expect something in return, right? These are the folks, these are the folks who are finding it harder and harder to get by, while the wealthy few set their sights on unlimited skies, some even going as far as Mars. And it's this disparity, this inequality, this wealth inequality, that's what's destroying the lives of everyday people. Not phantom threats, not immigrants, not books, not even Harvard. It's wealth inequality. Now, to quote an article in Fortune Magazine, which is by no means some left-wing rag, right? This is an article from last year. "If you ever get the feeling that the rich keep getting richer, you're not wrong. Not only do America's top 10% own the majority of wealth in the country, but the top 1% control nearly a third. Families at the bottom half hold only 6% of the wealth." That's it. And the chasm keeps growing. The rich keep getting richer, the poor keep getting poorer, and those of us in the middle? Well, truth be told, many of us were just one injury or one ailment or one unforeseen life event away from falling a few runs down the economic ladder. This is what keeps people, everyday folk, awake at night. Can I put in an honest day's labor and still get paid an honest day's wage? A living wage? Sadly, for most people, the answer is a resounding no. And that no only grows louder and louder as this chasm between rich and the rest of us widens under this current regime. In Luke's Gospel, Jesus tells a story about a rich man and a poor man named Lazarus. The poor man, he dies at the rich man's gate, and after all is said and done, Jesus makes it clear that the rich man, he had every chance, every opportunity to do the right thing, to do right by his name, but he refused. And so, as a result, a great chasm had been fixed between them. And not just between the rich man and the poor man, but also between the rich man and his God. Because to love your neighbor is to love God. And so, Senators Grassley and Ernst, Representative Miller Meeks, if you were here today as people who profess the same faith as I do, I would caution you. Think of your constituents, all your constituents, and what keeps them up at night. Think of the chasm between rich and poor that keeps growing. Consider how the decisions you make could either bridge that divide or cause it to grow beyond repair. And remember, remember, for the good of the soul, for the good of the soul of our nation, as well as your very own souls, no one can serve two masters. You cannot serve God and wealth. I would also have a question. Similar to what Pastor Ryan had to say, if I was to have the luxury of, again, Senators Ernst and Grassley and Representative Miller Meeks here, my question would be: What do you fear? Similar to what keeps you up at night, what do you fear? Because you must fear something for the bill that came out of the House to be present. It's so antithetical to the commission that you, as our representatives, have basically said is your goal, that there has to be something underpinning that. I don't know whether it's political machinations, I don't know if it's getting out of the Machiavellian whirlpool that must be Congress at this moment. I don't know if it's fundraising, I don't know if it's misguided thinking, but you must fear something. I don't know that, but I can tell you what some of your constituents fear. I am a pastor at large, who serves congregations, but presently, right now, I'm at the University of Iowa, specifically the guest service department, where I have the privilege of greeting people as they drive up each day to the Palmeran Center, the cancer center entrance, for a long time, orthopedics and others. While the bill may seem nebulous to you, the constituents may seem nameless, may seem faceless. They're not nameless, and they're not faceless to me. I know their names. I know their faces. I know at least some of their fears. My everyday is their battle of a lifetime. Many of these are radiation oncology patients, people whose day in, day out involves dropping by my outdoor office. And because I don't have a white coat, there's almost a bartender about. They tell me when their day is good. They tell me when their day is awful. They laugh, and they cry. And sometimes, I see them day after day, and then I don't see them anymore. Many of these folks are unmedicated. Already having to jump through bureaucratic hoops, which now are going to be even further imposed, greater barriers to what is already a barrier. Many of them reach the situation where they are, or I see them, knowing that something was wrong, but terrified that they would have absolutely no way to pay for it, maybe Medicare wouldn't cover it. And so, they waited, and they waited, and they waited until they couldn't wait anymore. Basic life, liberty, pursuit of happiness may seem like ideals to you, senators and representatives. They are far from that, for not only the citizens here, but the citizens throughout our country. I am of the Christian tradition. The words of Jesus to care for the least of these. I have the indescribable privilege of meeting some of them every single day, people of unimaginable worth and value. And it's all of us. And so, I don't know what you fear, but peddling fear, manufacturing, marketing, propaganda to further instill fear in the people that are already fearful seems beyond unconscionable. But we can change, all of us, by listening to the voice of each other. Even the voices we don't want, that's the hard part. It's easy to be in a gathering where we share a common commitment to justice. It's harder to extend that justice to those that seem to refuse to see it, though we have that responsibility to. For last I remember, it is we, the people, right? Thank you for your time.
I'm Reverend Diana Smith, the Minister of the Unitarian Universalist Society in Iowa City and Corvallis. I'm grateful to be with all y'all tonight because I know the sacred and creative power of community. I'm grateful to be together, even as I am deeply troubled about the reason that we are gathering and the reason that our guests are here. Because we are called tonight to gather because of a morally bankrupt, unjust, and inherently racist ill. A budget that, rather than casting a life-giving and love-spreading vision, casts a small, narrow, and pitiful vision of what America is and can be. A budget that takes us yet further away from our most basic callings to act justly, love, mercy, and go humbly with our God. A budget where, because of the racism that has shaped this country from the beginning, our laws, our policies, our basic structures. A budget where more harmful impacts will fall more heavily on people who are Black, Brown, Indigenous, and at risk of deportation. A budget that any one of us would be ashamed to try to pass for our households, our businesses, and certainly for our congregations, both because of its serious financial shortcomings and its grievous moral and ethical lines. We would be deeply ashamed to develop a budget that so clearly takes food away from the hungry, removes access to healthcare, hinders our access to clean air and water, takes money from the poorest members of our family or community and gives it to those who are incredibly rich, and leaves racism throughout. And given, given that we would be ashamed to do this in our homes and our communities, why, why would we allow this in our country? We have been called to gather to give voice to these grievous moral and ethical errors, to the pain that the path that this country is on is causing, to call our elected representatives back into a better, more life-giving and love-giving path, to call ourselves and our communities into covenant as people who will help create something better. This, this is a journey that my Unitarian Universalist religion has been on for decades, really for centuries. The path has not been clear. It has been bumpy and circuitous. We have had to listen closely, really to learn new ways of listening and to discern carefully. We have needed to widen our circle of concern to learn from people with marginalized identities what we need to do better and differently. And we have needed to follow the listening and learning with actions. We have needed to have deep and challenging conversations to question and transform our budgets and policies to center our best values. We have needed to give up some of our individualism and lean further into anti-oppressive relationships. We've needed to take risks, both by having conversations, building relationships, and by taking, taking actions with a liberatory lens. We've needed to make mistakes, listen to their impacts, be accountable, and discern ways to do better. We've needed to give up knowing what the outcome of our actions will be and lead into discerning and acting together. And we are still on this journey. It is a difficult journey. But I have found, and members of our faith community, have found gifts beyond measure on it. There is more vibrancy, more beauty, more wonder, more laughter, more trust, more joy, more life, when we choose to work to actively and accountably dismantle racism and other oppressions, to create diverse, multicultural, loving community. These are the gifts that we find when we choose to live love ever more fully and ever more fiercely into this world, when we choose to lean into collective action and care by engaging in things like this evening's gathering, when we declare with our bodies and our voices that all of us, we all of us, to make it. And so, when we leave this space, may each and every one of us go committed to taking each of our next steps on this journey. May your listening tonight help you know what that step is. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Marissa Colander, and I serve the congregation at Gloria Day Lutheran Church here in Iowa City as the Minister of Faith Formation and Congregational Life. Pretty sure I win the title, or the longest title among our group. So as I say, I won the prize for education, and my path into this group and into leadership within communities of faith, for me, as a Christian and a Lutheran Christian, ahem, Johnny, and Kim, but her name's not up there, began at a baptismal point. But it found its purpose in a classroom. And not just any classroom, but a public school classroom. Throughout my life, I have been blessed with truly remarkable teachers, and I bet you all are picturing your favorite teachers in your heads right now. From preschool through graduate school. In fact, I was so inspired by these talented individuals that I earned a Bachelor of Arts in Elementary Education in 2002 and began teaching in those public schools. I am a proud product of the Cedar Rapids Community School district. As luck and life would have it, I also had the opportunity to learn and work in private schools. While I was fortunate to do my undergraduate education at a private college, and I do not take that for granted, and I would do it again, it is because of that education that I am proud to say, and say this with me, public money belongs only in public schools. The congregation at Gloria Day Lutheran Church is a member of the broader evangelical Lutheran church in America. The ELCA is a church that believes that God has called and is calling us, all of us, into life in the world together. Part of this call requires us to seek the common good for all and commits us to addressing social and cultural injustices and issues. As ELCA Lutherans, we believe it is our call to strive with others to ensure that all have access to high-quality education that develops personal gifts and abilities and serves the common good. This calling embraces all people in both church and society. As beings created for community, we accept personal responsibility to live in love with God and others, to care for the earth on which we depend, and to learn and continue learning throughout our lives in the confidence that God is active in and through that life. In light of the essential role of public education in serving the common good of the society, the lack of equitable access for many students to high-quality schools, and the often inadequate provision of financial resources, we affirm and advocate for the equitable, sufficient, and effective funding of public schools. Education in civil righteousness and earthly matters is a universal need and responsibility. God's work is evident in the dedication to this responsibility and its positive outcomes. As part of God's ongoing creation, we are called to support just education policies and institutions that promote human flourishing, the common good, and care for creation. Just as God rejoices over all creation, so too should the church rejoice in the opportunity for education which public schools offer to all children, regardless of race, religion, ethnicity, gender identity, economic status, ability, or nationality. Our public schools bring together children from many different backgrounds for a common education in a spirit of civic equality. As children are God's gift to their parents and their faith communities, so are they gifts to society. And society, through government, has a responsibility to provide for their fair, equitable, and quality education. This looks like a fully funded federal Department of Education. Fully funded nutrition programs for children and their families. School choice policies that don't rob public schools of public funds. This looks like inclusion and accommodations for students with disabilities. This looks like identification and remediation of physical, attitudinal, and implicit barriers to accessibility that could exclude or marginalize people, any people, from full participation and success. This looks like addressing the inequalities that result from institutionally racist policies and practices in our schools and the communities in which our students live. This looks like fully resourced and supportive schools which ensure that all LGBTQIA+ people are free to be their authentic selves. are free to be their authentic selves and pursue their dreams. This looks like safe, welcoming, and affirming learning environments in schools that value all students, their race, their religion, their sexual orientation, their gender, their socioeconomic status, their story, and so much more. So my friends, may we together, as the community of God, faithfully and boldly, because Johnny were Lutherans and we said boldly, that's Luther, boldly claim the call to protect, to defend, and promote equitable access to quality public education for all people. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Bridgette Lachlan, and I am a candidate for ministry with the Unitarian Universalist Association. But today, I am not speaking just as a faith leader. I am speaking as a spouse, as a parent, and as someone who believes deeply in the moral responsibility of our government to care for its people. My husband uses a wheelchair. My son has learning disabilities. My adult daughter has intellectual disabilities which will prevent her from ever living independently. So what I'm about to say isn't hypothetical. This is my life. This is my family. This is the lives of so many people in Iowa and in this nation. It is about millions of families who deserve to be seen and valued and protected. There are over 400,000 people with disabilities in Iowa who live outside of institutions. That's nearly 13% of our population. And this budget that the House passed and is going in front of the Senate, it would put many of them at risk. It would mean fewer supports, fewer opportunities, and more barriers for people who already face too many. At the center of the danger is this, the deep damaging cuts to Medicaid. Because a lot of people don't know this, but Medicaid is not just health insurance. Medicaid is a lifeline. It funds waivers that help people live at home with dignity, not having to live in institutions. It is what allows people with disabilities the training and support they need to get jobs and keep them. It's what allows my daughter to receive therapy and support. It's what gives exhausted family members a chance for respite care. And without those waivers provided by Medicaid, most disabled people would need to be institutionalized. And we already don't have enough beds for the people that need them. Imagine if 400,000 more people overwhelmed the system. If no institution can take them, many of the people become unhoused, and for most disabled people, that could be a death sentence. This bill also slashes funding for Social Security disability insurance, accessible housing, food and nutrition programs, and employment programs, undermining every foundation of independence and threatening people's survival. And it's not just adults. It targets our kids, too. I've walked alongside families in my life and in ministry who fight every day for their disabled children to receive the education that they are promised under federal law. And now this budget proposes cuts to special education, reducing idea grants, gutting funding for aides, therapists, technology, and inclusive classrooms. How do the more than 33,000 children with disabilities in Iowa, kids with autism, Down Syndrome, cerebral palsy, and so many other conditions, how did they thrive in a school system stripped down to the bones without the resources they need? What message does this send to them and to us? Let's be honest, disability is not someone else's issue. We are all, every one of us, one accident, one illness, one diagnosis away from needing the very supports that this budget cuts. If we destroy the safety net now, it won't be there when we need it most. But Iowa has led before, and it can lead again. It was our own Senator Tom Harkin who authored the Americans with Disabilities Act. He signed his floor speech in American Sign Language for his brother and for millions of others. That moment, that Iowa stood for courage, for compassion, for justice. The ADA was born in Iowa. Let it not die under a budget that betrays that spirit. My faith teaches that every person has inherent worth and dignity, every person, even though it's hard to understand. Justice is not passive, and compassion is not charity, it's solidarity. So to our representatives and senators, I say this. The big, beautiful bill is not beautiful. It is not just, and it is not Iowa. Iowa can do better. Iowa must do better. And you, our elected leaders, must carry forward our legacy, not erase it. Thank you.
I'm the Director of Operations and Development at Sacred Collective. I bring to, I bring to you as well greetings from our chaplain, Anna Blayle, who frequently reminds us that you can do hard things, you can do hard things, and we need each other. We need each other, which is why I'm so grateful that you're gathered this evening, and I give thanks to all who have spoken before and will speak after me, and to The Purpose Place for hosting us this evening. If our congressional delegation were here tonight, I would ask them, how does stigmatizing and attacking trans people strengthen our communities? Our congressional delegation and others in government have made attacking trans people central to their policies, from kicking people, kicking trans people out of military service, to denying and blocking renewal of passports for trans people, to pushing stereotypes and rumors that put trans people, especially trans children, at risk. By their words and their actions, our congressional delegation are creating a hostile environment that elevates the risk of suicide among trans people, especially youth. And now, the government is cutting funding to suicide prevention hotlines. Simultaneous. And evidently, that is not enough. Last week, Representative Marionette Miller-Meese voted to cut gender-affirming care from Medicaid and ACA insurance plans, in keeping with attempts to ban gender-affirming care nationwide, for all ages. That bill is currently entering the Senate, where Senators Grassley and Ernst have the power to protect coverage for gender-affirming care. Now, my colleagues have referenced their faith in calls to justice this evening, and unfortunately, religious language is often used to promote discrimination against LGBTQIA+ plus people. And religious groups continue to condemn people who don't conform to the cis hetero patriarchy. But core teachings of our faith traditions affirm human worth and dignity, regardless of social status or identity. Core tenets of our faiths affirm the mandate to prioritize well-being and health, even over other religious teachings. Allow me to share some examples from my own Christian faith. The Christian Gospels regularly feature Jesus compassionately healing those who he encounters, often in defiance of religious authorities, but in keeping with the Jewish duty to preserve human life. In Acts, we see one of the first accounts of Christian baptism comes because of the courageous self-advocacy of the Ethiopian Bunic, a prominent gender non-conforming figure in Scripture who then shares the Gospel with an entire new people. And in his letters, Paul argues for an expansive community of faith, reaching beyond divisions on the basis of ethnicity or gender identity or class. And in Corinthians, he argues that the most vulnerable members are to be treated with special care. So I call on our congresspeople to remember these greater principles of health, wholeness, and human worth, and to turn away from dividing our communities for cynical political gain. They must vote to protect access to gender-affirming care for all Americans through Medicaid and the Affordable Care Act. And I call on all of us to continue advocating for the rights of trans folk and LGBTQIA+ plus people in general. Especially, I call upon cis hetero allies, and especially call us to work in our religious communities, confessing our failures, we have traditions of confession, confessing our failures to protect LGBTQIA+ people, and telling the truth about denominational practices and national policies of discrimination. And call us to do this faithful action, knowing that we can turn and be made whole as we repent of our homophobia and transphobia, and stand in solidarity with our siblings, that together we can create a world in which all will thrive. May it be so.
I'm Robin Peggy Hierakis, a pastor of the Sullen United Methodist Church. In our Christian tradition, Pentecost is coming up soon, and at this event, at the very beginning of the Christian church, after Jesus' resurrection, God used a diversity, equity, and inclusion program. When the Holy Spirit came upon the disciples on Pentecost, the Holy Spirit gave them the ability to speak in other languages that they didn't know, so that everyone present could hear those early disciples speak about God's deeds of power in their own language. God wanted to make sure that no one was excluded because of the language they spoke. The need for diversity, equity, and inclusion programs is because we need to be honest about the history of our country, our society, and individuals in society. There have always been people, policies, and institutions that have treated all classes of people unfairly and cruelly, and even as less than human. Even when some of the laws have changed to be more inclusive and we see more opportunities in many ways, the discrimination and inequality and exclusion continue on in many ways. Diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are about recognizing these social and individual acts and policies of harm and making repentance as a society to correct these harms. They are also about holding ourselves accountable to continue to notice and correct these harms, even when we don't feel that we, as individuals, did the initial wrong, even when it feels awkward and uncomfortable at times. Most of our religious traditions ask us to look at our wrongdoings, confess our sins, look at the ways we have fallen short and the ways we've hurt others. Most religious traditions have ways of asking for forgiveness and ways of repairing broken relationships, and most religious traditions do not give permission to continue doing harm once you have asked or prayed for forgiveness. Repairing the harm requires repentance, turning around and going a new way, changing how we do things. It's not enough to just offer words of being sorry, although that's a good starting point, it's much better than denying the problem altogether. In 12-step programs, seven of the 12 steps are about noticing and recognizing ways that we have hurt others and about making amends for the harm that we have caused. Diversity, equity, and inclusion programs are not enough and are not the only way to try to repent and correct the harms of the past, but they are a powerful movement and a powerful set of programs and education in the right direction. As people of faith, as people of faith, we need to stand up against this current administration's dismantling, defunding, and attacking of diversity, equity, and inclusion initiatives. Faith traditions are in large part about telling stories, and instead of removing references to people of color who have done amazing things in the past and in the government, and banning stories who are part of the, of people who are part of the LGBTQIA+ community, and letting people with disabilities not see themselves as having a place in society, we need to promote and celebrate the contributions that are made by people from many diverse identities and backgrounds and skill levels. We need to help individuals and institutions notice and educate about the ways they do things that can be a source of holding people down from a wide range and diverse range of backgrounds and identities, and denying them opportunities for jobs, housing, healthcare, education, and many other resources. Some of the ways we do that or have done that have been intentional and out of hate or fear or a sense of threat. Many of those ways are also continued unintentionally, but diversity itself is a source of strength. Many places in religious writings and teachings of our various traditions lift up those who value and provide care for people on the margins of society. Many other places in those writings and teachings offer warnings and condemnation for those who reach for power and ignore or put down or press those who have less power. In the traditions that use the Book of Genesis as a sacred writing, we recognize that all people are created in the image of God, both male and female, and all people in all of our diversity. As people of faith, we are called to be celebrating diversity, working towards more equity in society amidst all of the diversity. and finding ways to break down walls, not put up more walls, and create more inclusion, rather than building walls of division and hatred and building physical walls to keep people out. We need to stop taking away access to resources. When we join our voices together as people of faith, when we call people of faith to be responsive to the teachings of their own faith, we can pave the way for our values of love, compassion, and justice, and diversity to be lived out more in our society.
We've all been so patient. We're finally nearing the end. I'm Mary-Kate Kushner. I am a Catholic woman priest. We say— We say "woman priest" because it is forbidden in the Catholic Church, the Roman Catholic Church, for women to be ordained. I still chose to become ordained and then fully excommunicated because I believe that all are called to become fully who they are meant to be, regardless of gender, race, or creed. I learned about inclusion through my daughter Anna. She is my fourth child, and my three boys are great. But Anna is an important part of our family. She was born with a genetic challenge, and so she has special needs. She is nonverbal. She doesn't read or write. But boy, if you meet Anna, you will know what it means to be included. She will reach out to you, and she will want to get to know you. Before Anna, I was a privileged white woman who knew nothing about prejudice, being different, being othered. With Anna, I have learned that different is a good thing. Diversity is a gift, and it needs to be respected and protected. Amen. When MAGA began, I found it cringe-worthy how hateful it was. I could not believe that family members, friends, people that I knew could support such animosity. When Christian nationalists lied that they were following Christ while perverting the very teachings of Christ, I was outraged. You may remember this. This was probably before Trump's first presidency. But do you remember when he was interviewed, and they asked him, "What's your favorite Bible passage?" Do you remember what he said? He said, "Oh, there's, um, there's an eye for an eye." I think we all laughed because, of course, that Hebrew scripture, which he would have had—
It is always misunderstood.
That's right. That's right. So it was Mattel's fair punishment, right? An eye for an eye, not two eyes for one eye. But it's the exact scripture that Christ chose to further, right? So no criticism. But Christ said, "Let's go further. Let's respond in love, in love." So Christ really gave us credit that we might improve and progress and learn and become more wise by suggesting that instead of the simple reptilian brain that responds immediately to threat, that perhaps we could do differently and actually respond in love. So Trump had no idea what being a Christian means, what that scripture meant. He has never read the Bible or bothered to learn basic Christian teachings. How do we know that? Matthew tells us, "Beware of false prophets, who come to you in cheap clothing; but inwardly they are ravenous wolves. You will know them by their fruits." I am going to say that Trump has no fruits. Trump only has a love of power, period. These Christian nationalists are known for their love of power. And anyone who supports them and their un-Christian agenda, their un-American agenda, needs to be stopped. That's Ernst, Miller Meeks, and Grassley. They must be seen for who they are and who they support. We can help stop them. Christian nationalism is based on hatred for the other, for anyone who is not like them, for anyone who is not as power-hungry as they are. These are not Christian values. Christian values are: Love thy neighbor as thyself. Do good to those who hurt you. Turn the other cheek. There are so many scriptures that teach us to love all others. Love is the prevailing value, not hatred, not violence, not white supremacy. In Iowa, we're typically known for being kind and caring, helping the stranger, being Midwestern-friendly. Christian nationalism wants to end that. Stop being so kind and caring. Only worry about yourself. Don't use your higher self. Don't become emotionally intelligent enough to value others. Don't long for peace and unity. That's what's happening in Iowa because of Christian nationalism. If Anna were here tonight, she would take your hand and automatically join it with another. Anna is all about unity. She wants everyone to be in a relationship with each other. Some might say, "Oh, that's just her intellectual challenge." But I would argue that she is leading the way through her supposed lack. Trump would look down on Anna, seeing her as less. But Anna would reach out to him, as she does all people, and without words, she would show him what love looks like, how love acts, by taking his hand and making him hold hands with a stranger. So let us be the ones like Anna to show the world what love looks like. May God's love rule the day. May love win.
My name is Pastor Ronis Furti, and I am a pastor in Lightstop Ministries here in Iowa City. And I am charged with giving a call to action. The first thing I want to say is, I am so grateful to have been invited to be a part of this event this evening, and to all of our faith-based leaders who have spoken on these topics that are so near and dear to our heart. Thank you for the compassion, the passion with which you share your personal stories. We've heard tonight, we've heard stories based off of the need for our public education, income inequality, creation care, racism, DEI, Medicaid, disability rights, immigration, LGBTQ+ rights, and Christian nationalism. And as I was sitting here this evening, and I was just taking in everything that you all had to share, it made me think of the many ways in which Jesus moved, had been moved with compassion. What I will say is, one of the worst positions to be in is a position where you think you're right, and you can have it all wrong. I've been here before, where, you know, we all are different. We all have different ways in which we come up, different belief systems. And sometimes you can think you're right and be wrong. And you're blessed if somebody comes across your path that is willing to take up and hold space with you and meet you where you are, and maybe have a conversation or share a story that's personal. Sometimes in our world—I work on behalf of— I'm a pastor, but I also work on behalf of victims of crime. So sometimes it takes finding that personal story that allows you to meet a person where they are to make it a human issue, and not a you-versus-me type of issue, because we all have needs. We all have things that we're concerned about. And so there was a passage of Scripture that came to me, and as I was sitting here listening—I believe it was Yvonne— she made a statement that said, "Repairing the harm." Repairing the harm. Man, that hit me like a ton of bricks, because sometimes you don't even realize the kind of harm that you're inflicting on people because of what your agenda is, your motivation is. And so I'm grateful that we're here this evening. In Matthew 25— and you guys should be familiar with this, verse 35 through 40. It talks about—you know, there are many instances in the Gospels where Jesus healed, where he fed, where he delivered people from infirmity and diseases. And it's something that sticks out to me about him being moved with compassion. And when I looked that up—it's a Greek word that "moved with compassion" is derived from. It's from the Greek word "sloppis nisumai." And that word is not just a sense of pity or sympathy for a person, but it is a deep, profound emotional response that moves you beyond just emotion, but it moves you in a deep, personal way to the degree that it causes you to take up some form of action. It encompasses a visceral feeling that moves one to action beyond just your emotions. So tonight, this has been amazing. This has been fantastic that you would come to the southeastern, you know, side of town, that we would hold space with one another, that we would hear about these issues that impact us personally, impact our loved ones, things that we're passionate about. But what I'm going to ask you is, what happens when you leave here? Was this just something that you were invited to, and that you dedicated a couple hours of your evening, and when you leave, you go back into your personal spaces of comfort? You know, I challenge you to think about, what are the ways in which you can use the knowledge that you have, your personal lived experience, the privilege that you have, in the spaces that you will go into? How can you be a change agent in a compassionate way? Because sometimes people can be doing the best that they know how, but they need you to meet them where they are to help them make the necessary adjustments so that we humanize each other in the things that we care so deeply about. And so in Matthew 25, 35 through 40, what stuck out to me is religious folks can think we got it right. You know, we taking up the cause, and we can be doing harm to so many. So Jesus said, "I was hungry, and you gave me meat. I was thirsty, and you gave me drink. I was a stranger, and you took me in, naked, and you clothed me. I was sick, and you visited me. I was in prison, and you came unto me. Then shall the righteous answer him, saying, 'Lord, when saw we thee hungered and fed thee, or thirsty and gave thee drink? When saw we thee a stranger and took thee in, or naked and clothed thee? Or when saw we thee sick or imprisoned and came unto thee? And the king shall answer and say unto them, 'Verily, I say unto you, 'Inasmuch as ye have done it unto one of the least of these my brethren, he hath done it unto me.'" And so when I think about that, it really drives home our most vulnerable, who don't have a voice oftentimes, who are literally living for the day, living for the moment, and we get to come together and use our resources, use our voices. Man, I wish our elected officials were here because they would be able to see the impact that their constituents have, what we're living through, and we matter. And so in a call to action, when you leave here— listen, sometimes it can be intimidating when you think of reaching out to your representatives, but they need to hear from you. And that can be via email, by sending them letters. They want to hear from their constituents, or at least they say they do. So we can make our voices loud and clear. These numbers that are here, call them. Worry them. We have a responsibility to cause some good trouble. Good trouble. But they may not want to hear from us, but we're shaking the trees. No, you're not going to silence us. We're here to advocate for the things that matter to us. But for those that cannot advocate for themselves, they're calling on us, those of us that are faith leaders. We lead people. We represent people. We always get it right. So to the ones that have said, "When you recognize that you've done it wrong," being able to drop pride and repent and making a turn and say, "You know what? I'm going to do better because I know better." It's something that we can do collectively. Not just tonight, but like Pastor Fred said, I hope that this starts a movement and an ability to open up our doors for us to be able to come together. You know, in my close, the past couple of years, I've been asked during Black History Month to read the "I Have a Dream" speech, because everybody knows, you know, the movement, Martin Luther King Jr., you know, his advocacy, his style of advocacy. And as I was preparing to give a call to action tonight, those words just kind of hit me a little bit differently this evening because it was inclusive. It wasn't just for one group of individuals. It was a dream of what could be. If you don't have hope—you know, my former pastor would always say, "Keep hope alive." No matter what things look like right now, don't let anybody put out your ability to dream, your ability to hope for a better future and what it could look like, but not just dreaming to be a part of the change that you wish to seek. And so the ending part of that speech that I have read before, but it just hits different tonight, I'm going to read it to you in my close. It says, "And so let freedom ring from the prodigious hilltops of New Hampshire; let freedom ring from the mighty mountains of New York; let freedom ring from the heightening alligines of Pennsylvania; let freedom ring from the snow-caked Rockies of Colorado; let freedom ring from the curvaceous slopes of California. But not only that; let freedom ring from the stone mountain of Georgia; let freedom ring from Lookout Mountain of Tennessee; let freedom ring from every hill and molehill of Mississippi; from every mountainside, let freedom ring." And when this happens, when we allow freedom to ring, when we let it ring from every village and every hamlet, from every state, from every city, we will be able to speed up that day when all God's children— I'm telling you, that hit me in a different way— when all God's children, black men and white men, Jews and Gentiles, Protestants and Catholics, will be able to join hands and sing in the words of the old Negro spiritual, "Free at last, free at last! Thank God Almighty, we are free at last." So y'all, this is my hope. This is my dream. This is the space that I hold with you this evening. My hope and my prayer is that you have been energized by being in this collective space together, that you take something that you've heard from each of these dynamic speakers. They didn't get up here just for the words. They poured pieces of themselves into this space. And so when you leave here, I want you to examine yourself and look and say, "What can I do that moves me beyond my comfort zone?" Because that's when real change will occur. We all have a sacrifice to make. We all have a voice to make. We all have spaces that we exist in. We have a responsibility. I thank you so much for allowing me this opportunity. Have a great evening.